These guys do a lot. They're on the hazmat team. They just do a lot for this county that people don't recognize them. That's it, I want to chill. I recognize Fred, Mr. Fred Cummings. He asked me not to do this, but I feel like our employees need recognizing when they're out here doing stuff. So Fred graduated from the Phase One, Allstate University Certified Public Manager Program just a few weeks ago, and he starts the second phase of this this fall, September. Yep. So Fred deserves a hand. Good job. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
For yours, sir. I actually have Chris King here if he wants to come in. I have to recognize him as well. If he comes in. So there was a Facebook post on Friday that I want to highlight. One of the things, one of my goals when I took over was to make our training program set to a national standard. And over the last two and a half years, as part of his Registered Public Safety Leader Program, Chris worked on our agency training program. And I'm happy to report that as of Friday, we were notified by Apple International that our training program is now set to a national standard. And we are either the first or one of the first in Indiana to accomplish this. It's been a long two and a half years, but I'm proud of it. And Chris should be proud of it because of the amount of time he gives into it. So I'd like to recognize him as well. Mr. King, would you like to come in? I so much.
Well, if I'd known I was going to be giving comments, I'd have prepared something, but that's cool. I just had to show up. Um, like I told the Director and Deputy Director whenever I was notified that we received this certification, and they were like, well, congratulations. It wasn't just a me, a me project. It included everyone that we employ at 911. It includes everyone that we service, including the public. So it's not just a congratulations to me. It's a congratulations really to all of Delaware County and all of 911. But thank you. Thank you. Nice showing. Appreciate it.
Alright, so a lot, lot going on in other buildings here in the county. Okay, we have appointments. Murray and Health Services. Yep. So Murray and Health Services is an organization that the Commissioners give quite a bit of money to every year. I think it's mandated by state code. I don't really use the state code off the top of my head, but it's somewhere around $700,000. And that gives us the opportunity to have an appointment on their board. Commissioner Rigan and I spoke with Seth at Legislative Update Breakfast here recently, and he said he's currently operating with 14 members, which is an even number, which can create competition sometimes, but ideally you have an odd number on the board. And he asked if we were going to appoint somebody. So I think the previous appointment was Commissioner King. So that's the purpose of talking about Murray today. And Commissioner Brand, you're up for a year. That's perfect. I'll second. Rule call please. Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. That's other thing. Alright, next Delaware County Prevention Council. Yeah, I was approached by a couple of board, people on the board for the Delaware County Prevention Council, asking if the Commissioners were going to appoint someone. And I had passed that information on to the two of you. Commissioner Rigan asked if this was not a Commissioner appointment, rather a Council appointment. I reached out to Jessica Piper, who was the President previously of the Council, and she said this is not a county council appointment.
I don't know. At one time, there was a Council member that served. He might have just been serving, you know, individuals. But we've never received any kind of notification that we have a fee.
I've never, I've never.
I think they have some new leadership.
And I have a little bit of information here about the meeting dates, and they're not consistent. Some of them are on the third, the third day, the third Tuesday of the month. Some are on the second one, and one on the fourth. There's not one in October. I don't know the location or time, so I would make the motion that we table this until we can gather more. Motion to table that appointment. And a second rule call please. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Rigan. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. But there was a question came up from the Sheriff about the Creed Board appointment that we made. We had appointed David Williams, and he's been the Commissioner's appointment, as I understand it, for several years. And our legal counsel, John Book, said that there was a requirement to have someone representing the Union on that Creed Board. So that still needs vetted out whether David Williams qualifies and is interested or not. But I believe the Creed Board is still open, and we should at least put it on the table so we don't forget about it. Very good. Do we need to make the motion to put this on the table? Daniel.
I'm letting it know, I think.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to put the Creed Board, David Williams, on the table. Motion and a second rule call please. Commissioner Rigan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Okay, next, under Table Business, Handbook Revisions. I know we did have a meeting that I became part of by default last week, I think. Did you guys get those emails? The other things for the hand.
Yeah, yeah.
This is Pam here to speak. Pam, you want to speak about any of that?
I don't really.
So I'll make a motion to take the Handbook Revisions off the table. Do we have a motion removed? Okay, one second. Rule call please.
I just kind of wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on. Commissioner Rigan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Go ahead.
I just kind of wanted to give a report on this. I'm going to ask that it will be tabled again. But we are working very hard on this, and we are making progress. We had a really good meeting the other day, and so I hope we have the Commissioners' support on our decisions. And that's what I just wanted to let people know, the reason this is being tabled. We're doing a lot of work. We're going through each thing in the handbook.
But I think, I think we're getting, I mean, in my opinion, we're getting close.
We're getting very close.
We need to prove this, so I would like to definitely seriously revisit this next week.
Okay, that's great.
We can get.
I think we can get it. That, that.
Okay.
Because we don't have a lot left to do.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So you're saying it'll be on the agenda, being reviewed and approved next week?
If I stand here, yes, I hope.
I think so.
Yeah. It depends on how this meeting goes on Thursday. I mean, we got done business last week, and we got a lot done. So that's what we need. An acceptable meeting, because we got done.
Motion to table it. Yes. Motion to table it again. Second. Second rule call please. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Rigan. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. No new information on solar? Actually, I do have an update. I'd like to remove that from the table, because I didn't know that. Have a motion to remove from the table? Second rule call please. Commissioner Rigan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Goodness, Brian. Thank you. So I've attended a number of additional meetings with some other counties, some folks that are in favor of the solar, some folks that are concerned about the solar. I honestly haven't met anyone yet that just says absolutely no to solar. People generally believe that there's a place for solar with the right guardrails in place. I attended the National Grid Renewable Meeting at Cornerstone Center for the Arts last week. I saw their buildable map with our current ordinance in place with the progress with setbacks. I had a real meaningful conversation with Christina Blunt from National Grid Renewables, talking about how they could take care to maybe compromise the setback where there's an empty lot that's adjacent to a solar and get it further away from the residents and put it closer to an empty lot. She had a discussion there, I witnessed, with some of the landowners that are going to be affected by the solar, but not benefiting from the solar. So I was pleased with that, and I really wanted to, I've said it a couple of times for National Grid Renewable, they're doing the best job out of all of the companies that are doing solar in the county of giving the community an opportunity for input and evaluation. I've received a number of emails, as I believe both of the other two Commissioners have, people giving their opinion on solar, and I appreciate that. I respond to every single one of them, even if it's only a simple thank you. I want people to know that I've read it and I've responded. The ordinance work goes on, starting with the Planning Commission, all that, still working with John Book and Daniel Scrubell. So that works going on. Wanted to mention that, as it relates to National Grid Renewable, they sold recently. There's a company called Brookfield Asset Management that has purchased National Grid Renewable. I don't know what that means. You know, I'm not on the inner workings of either one of those companies. I just wanted to make a note that National Grid Renewables has sold. And I believe that one thing that the Commissioners and the Council need to pick up are economic development agreements. There is an economic development agreement within energy. I'm not super pleased with that agreement. It's a little bit anemic. It doesn't do much benefit to the county or the citizens of Delaware County. And the other companies, there is not an economic development agreement in place. And it's my opinion, and mine alone, and I've talked to the two Commissioners about this, that these economic development agreements should be put in place prior to permitting. And I think that's important for a couple of reasons. One reason is the company who is obviously trying to make this thing pencil out on paper, whether it's good or bad business, needs to know what the economic development agreement looks like before they go permit. Last thing we want to do is have them, if I can put it, end up with an economic development agreement that's ungood for them or the county, and then we're too far down the road. So I did start discussions between the Council Leadership and the Commissioners via email last week about getting the economic development agreements back up on the table. Specifically, who's the lead? And the last agreement, I think, the one with Inenergy, was done by the Commissioners Economic Development Representative, and the Council believes it's our responsibility, not proposals that we put together. So more to come on that. Also, I've made some comments about small modular reactors. There's a CINA bill in place that talks about that, and I was told, hey, you might be confusing the public a little bit, comparing when I visited the Cook Nuclear Plant up in Bridgman, Michigan, and SMRs. And they're two totally different things. We would never build a plant here in Delaware County like you see in Bridgman, Michigan. That's two huge reactors. They take in a million and a half gallons of water a minute from Lake Michigan and return it the same way. SMR is going to use that technology. They use a couple of different types. Some of them use some cooling salts, some of them use some liquid metals, and it's all self-contained on site. I wanted to make the public aware, in case they hadn't seen it, that American Electric Power, who is our power provider here in Delaware County, has applied and they're seeking grants from the U.S. Department of Energy. They're looking for a $50 million grant from the Tennessee Valley Authority. There's a property down in Rockport, Indiana, where the coal plants were, and they're looking at that. Might be the first site in Indiana for small modular reactor. The type of technology that they're proposing using there is a General Electric Atachi partnership. And the model of reactor that they're talking about using is a GEH DWRX-300. And that would be similar to, I think, about 100 of these types of reactors have been installed in the world. It's proven technology. It's similar to what you see in our naval nuclear fleet, or submarines and carriers and things like that. So very, very mature, very stable technology. One other thing, I got asked if, once this permitting process does start, there's a requirement or ordinance that this goes through the special use process through the Planning Commission and the BCA. And I've got a copy of that here, and some folks pointed out some of the standards to me. This is Article 31 in our Special Use Standard. And under vegan standards, number one says, "The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, conveniences, or general welfare." And number two, under that same section, this was also pointed out to me, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. So I was asked to point those things out. That concludes my update. You might have to fill the background in there. Second. Motion to put the solar back on the table. Second rule call please. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Rigan. Yeah. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Next is the Agreement for Economic Development with ECIR PD. Make the motion to take it. Motion to remove that from the table. And a second rule call please. Commissioner Rigan. Yeah. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Morning Commissioners. This was our last meeting. I think you've all have in front of you a new agreement as we have sat down and had several discussions. This is for the international development only. We kind of went through, had a couple of meetings, went over some topics. The services there, we want to continue what we've established over the last eight years. I mean, we have a pretty good pipeline. Some of the things, just to update a little bit service-wise, you know, we help with buildings, building sites, leases, legal attorneys, all of that. From banks to accounting, permitting, utility, housing, all of those services that we've used and put together in a nice layout. The partners that we have, all still are in place. And just a little update of where we stand as of right now, what has taken place for a little bit. FilterX North America, already here, everybody somewhere aware of. Trip, Trevi Robotics, FD Casting, Colorflex NA, we had a meeting on that. That will be the lease signs this month, maybe this week. We've got the visa was taken in, so we can now enter into the lease on that. Colorflex can now become part of Delaware County. Mercelli, Inox, who we're all well aware of, Clearline Technologies, and we just did the ribbon cutting in February with BiTechnic. They got certified for their major line, and things are moving forward there. Those are ones that we've already established and have been brought here. What's currently in the pipeline, some of these, I will not name the names of the company because we're still in talking, but it's, you know, we're talking Shannon. Our Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Rigan have been there. But we have a hydraulic cylinder that is moving closer to fruition. Restaurant Equipment Manufacturer has over a million square feet in Italy right now that is still interested in some sites that we have in the industrial center. A candy supplier that has made contact with us two or three times, and we still need to make a trip there. A helicopter manufacturer that we met at the last Select USA. I believe Sherry and Shannon, you were both there on that. Those conversations need to take place. We have kept those communications going, as you have reworked to put the economic development team together, along with the county and along with the city of Muncie. So I think things are looking bright. I think we have great opportunities. First week of May, as you are well aware, we have the Select USA Summit. That is where the major hit comes from, all the foreign investment that comes in. The platform for that will go live this month. We will start doing research on companies that are coming, going through the data and presenting them to you to set appointments for those meetings that take place, those first hour of three days in Maryland. So hopefully, we can keep the pipeline going. We have them, as you see, in all three different phases, from beginning to somewhere in the middle with logistics and paperwork being done, visas being waited on, immigration paperwork, to BiTechnic signing the lease, getting certified for a major supply lot. We have been busy. We want to continue with this. I think Commissioners from our meetings has laid out a good plan to move forward, how you want economic development to happen throughout the county with all parties involved. I think it's a good, a good system that you set up. The matrix that you set out, I mean, getting down to and getting together so that we all know what is going on from a month-to-month basis so that we can help each other out in whatever form or fashion that may be. Just because it's international development, once it's international, it comes in here, then it will go to local. I mean, it will go to local, whether it's in the county or whether it's in the city. So it will be all three teams working together to try and continue this pipeline. This has been the Commissioners' program. Eight years ago, I was just blessed to be on the ground floor of it. The system has been refined, it's been lured, and I think we've proven a very good track record with this. Thank you. This is a reduction over what we had table two weeks ago, as I'm reading here. Correct. And you will need to hire someone to, yes, I'll be bringing two more people on staff with ECI. So the question is how we pay for this. Right. And there's another one on Monday in a few minutes that all have the same question. I think we need to probably review the funding for Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. I think that's where the funding is coming from for this. I don't see it. I have, we, we have paid some out of that, but I believe the majority of the VCRs. It's been, it's went back and forth several different times, depending on where you're at in your three-year edit plan. I mean, availability of dollars and what's going on as far as the redevelopment commission. The two go hand in hand. I mean, you work in one side of it, then you may be doing a building or a bond in this area or other things, infrastructure costs coming out of that. So it is a, it's pretty much a constant flow. We've been back and forth over the years when it was best to suit your budget. So looking at the edit, Commissioner Rigan, Project 3, Muncie Delaware County Redevelopment, there's $100,000 in the edit plan for 2025. And at the last meeting, we allocated $50,000 of that to IREX program. There's $50,000-ish left in that Project 3. And then as I look at Project 4, Economic Development, which is general heading, there's also $100,000 in 2025. So this, the money isn't there in the current plan, which expires on June 30th.
None of that editing.
What's that?
May, we will be working on the edit at that rate by March.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, because this one expires in June 30th. So I would make the motion to approve, considering review with Delaware County Development Commission for the funding of this economic development agreement, services agreement. A motion for approval, and we will talk to VCRC about possibility of assisting anybody for this contract. Second. Okay, so Sherry made the motion. Can we have a second rule call please? Commissioner Rigan. Yeah. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for February 8th, 2025. You guys had some revisions to those minutes. You did. We had appointed Kristi Knapp to the BCA, and the correct spelling for her name is K-R-I-S-T-I-K-N-A-P-T, which I believe that correction was made. And then I sent another correction on the Crown Castle letter, which we're going to talk about again here in a second, that we declined the consent of the Savvies, but I'll get to that in a minute. And then I think on the ECIR PD contract, which we just talked about, Commissioner Rigan, or Commissioner Henry called for the motion to table last meeting. And then, let's see, there was a correction to the spelling. Under my comments, I said Inenergy. And instead of energy, it should be Inenergy, I-N-B-E-N-E-R-G-Y. And then I believe in the last meeting, we approved the New Norm Agreement for Jamie Bain at the last meeting, and I don't see that in minutes. So we need to add, that was the last meeting, correct, Jamie? Yeah. So we need to add the New Norm Agreement into the, into the correction minutes. And make the motion to approve the minutes on those corrections that I just articulated. A motion, a second rule call please. Commissioner Brand. Yes. Commissioner Rigan. Yeah. Commissioner Henry. Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the presentations. The Commissioners have the Safe Streets for All Grant. It's a little button right in the middle on the bottom there. There you go. Sheriff, can you turn that one on right behind you, right in the middle on the bottom? Push that little button, please. Thank you. Are you looking for your input? There you go. American. Right? There you go.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Nichols. I'm the Project Manager for the Safe Streets for All Federal Dance and Eastern Rondian Regional Planning District. CI, with me in the corner, is Miss Kylie Swathammer, who is the Executive Director of the Delaware-Muncie Metropolitan Planing Commission. Today, our goal to you is to introduce both our organizations, explain to you what the SS4A federal grant is, how this federal grant will benefit you and all your community. Let me start by introducing my organization. Everyone, if you may remember just a few short moments ago, or months ago, please just speak just a few moments ago, too. Our Executive Director, Bill Walters, gave a great presentation of everything going on at ECI, Regional Planning District. He spoke of many federal grants and state grants that we currently have going on. One of those was the SS4A federal grant. And I just wanted to remind everybody of the 14:1 turnaround ECI has put back in since its foundation in 2009. For anybody who doesn't know who ECI Regional Planning District is, I have listed our mission statement and primary purpose along with a little bit of information about us. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kylie to introduce her organization and explain more about the SS4A.
Morning Commissioners. You guys are familiar with my office, but just as a reminder to everyone, we are the planning section for the city of Muncie and Delaware County. We also house the Building Commissioner and do all the permitting. We are also designated as the NPO by the Governor of Indiana. Any urbanized area with over $50,000 with a population over 50,000 is a designated entity. So we provide that function as well. This helps us get federally authorized to receive money for road projects, safety projects, bridge, safety projects. So a little bit about the Safe Streets and Roads for All Frame. The SS4A was established through the IIJA. This program will have $5 billion dispersed through the years of 2022 to 2026. ECI did receive this grant July 24th. So this grant has been awarded to ECI and my office has. There is still almost $2 billion on the table for implementation grants. So in the future, we will be seeking this money, and this will help implement the projects that we find throughout this first cycle. So how does this benefit you? Improve Broadway safety, reduce severe injuries and deaths. Maintainable infrastructure supports long-term economic growth. Effective transportation planning enhance mobility and connectivity. Regional collaboration strengthens community resilience. A result of this will be a regional transportation safety action plan. So the four counties of Blackford, Delaware, Bay, and Grant will all have this plan to then be able to use in our county. Most importantly, implementation dollars can be sought and used to complete projects in our area. Um, most importantly, implementation dollars can be sought and used to complete projects in our area.
All right. So now let me talk a little bit more about kind of where SS four A came from. So the SS four A federal grant is called a safe system approach. And that is also what has been developed through Vision Zero, which is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. You can see how it aligns with the SS four A grants initiative very well. Um, I want to read a statistic up here, which is also when you click on the Vision Zero's official website, it's one of the first things you'll read. Each year, more than forty two thousand people, which is the population of a small city, are needlessly killed on American Street. Many thousands more are injured. We call this suffering traffic accidents, but in reality, we have the power to prevent traffic collisions. Notice the change in the word there at the end. Um, and finally, I listed an image I put together. This is just listing a few things that the traditional approach used to think and now what the safe system approach brings to the table. And I don't like you guys, I don't think saving lives is not, you know, as expensive. So the broader term, what is the safe system approach now? Again, Vision Zero is one of these. So this was something that was embraced by the transportation community as an effective way to address and mitigate the risk inherited in our enormous and complex transportation system. It works by building and reinforcing multiple layers of protection to both prevent crashes from happening in the first place and minimize the harm caused to those involved when they do occur. Because we know again, everybody's perfect. We're going to have crashes. Um, that's not the goal here, to prevent crashes, you know, that's something that's a little unreasonable. But the point is, is that we can do something to make the change. Um, the biggest point here is why I have the second bulletin, uh, folded. Is this is a major shift from the conventional or traditional safety approach. Because now it focuses on human mistakes and vulnerability and designs a system with many redundancies in place to, uh, protect everyone.
Okay, so we are here just because we need your engagement. Um, local leaders like you possess firsthand knowledge of issues in your communities, concerns. Um, we're simply asking for engagement and feedback. Um, key safety concerns in your area, existing safety initiatives that you're aware of, and any opportunities for inner county flourish. Um, we are reaching out to key stakeholders and we are also forming a steering committee. Um, we are looking for about three to four people from each of the counties to serve on a steering committee. Um, as a member of the steering committee, responsibilities would be include to collaborate with other local officials, review data, and attend periodic meetings, um, to provide input and feedback. Our meetings, um, let's see, we are looking at about an four meeting between the timeline of April through December. Um, so that would be the commitment. We would like to have any one of you serve on the steering committee or a designee of your choice. Um, so that's what we are here for. We're not here to ask for money. We're here to ask for you to work with us. Um, we're looking for representative for our steering committee. We're looking for your engagement and to keep you informed and also for your feedback.
Well, I would be glad to volunteer if nobody else wants to do it because it's just so sad how we see people walking the old fashioned way. And we were always taught years ago, walk facing traffic. Ride your bike with traffic. I believe that that's still the thing. And we just don't see that sometimes in our city streets. You know, I wish we could put more sidewalk through with some of the money.
Except, um, this, this study will go on until the final report is done. Anything found within that final report that could help improve safety could then be applied for to be implemented, um, as a project. So this could identify those concerns and those issues. Thank you. Yeah. Come on, Bill.
No, just one thing. Oh, this is important. I know she mentioned the two billion dollars on the backside. There's a lot into this planning grant that helps out everybody throughout the region. Identifying where those issues are and the problem areas that we can reduce. Now we can look at what you and mayors are looking at their infrastructure projects and try to match those up. Then go after part of that two billion dollars to relieve up to eighty percent of that cost. So that you can move those infrastructure dollars to another project. This whole grant, there is no ask on this because D C I, from the backside, we've used our administration funds and that. This was a five hundred thousand dollar grant. A hundred thousand of it comes from us. That's fifty thousand in kind and fifty thousand in cash. That is all going to be done out of D C I R P D from the reserves that we've had from taking on the other grant. So we're investing the money that we have used on the administration side so that we can get to the next step. I think the win of this, and these guys have worked really good with the D O D, uh, program manager. We, we increased the, uh, up, we up moved the date up to complete. So we would still be eligible for some of that two billion dollars on the backside. That basically does a lot, just not only for you, but for her with urban dollars and being able to move it around. Maybe making agreements with other ones that she can move funds around that we would not lose. If they've got shovel ready projects that we can go after that fund. I'm in favor of Commissioner Reagan supporting. I think this is important. Specifically for the region, I think this is a good opportunity for the R P Os and the N P Os to put together, which I believe is big focus of the state. I would only ask Commissioner Reagan to consider and the team to consider, uh, autonomous driving vehicles coming from the automotive industry. I'm acutely aware of the technologies that are coming, uh, with autonomous driving vehicles that they use sonar, they use Li D A R and they use radar. And these vehicles are smart. They will eventually communicate with the cities. It's called a connected cities program. So if there's a new pothole and the traffic pattern sees a bunch of autonomous driving vehicles swerving around it, it'll update the system. It'll notify the street department and get somebody out there, but it will also warn people coming ahead. If there's a new marking, a new stop sign, a new speed limit sign. All these vehicle systems will recognize that stuff and communicate with connected city. The intention there is also zero fatalities. I would only ask that please, uh, take into consideration autonomous driving vehicles and the technologies that are here and are coming very soon. There will be several surveys that go out, not only with these meetings, but they'll be online, we will hit social media. Everyone will have a chance to participate. Public and elected officials. Very good. Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Reagan.
I nominate Commissioner Reagan.
I think this is, this is that you're going to, uh, represent us.
Try to represent well.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, very nice, Matthew.
Next, we have, uh, Elizabeth Rowway with Muncie Delaware County Economic Development.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present. I actually have two pieces of business before you today. One is a proposal for Economic Development Services and one is, um, regarding a garage in our community. So I will start out with a proposal that you have in front of you first, if that's okay. Um, this is a proposal for Economic Development Services here in Delaware County. I represent the Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. This is an organization that has been in existence since nineteen eighty six. You've got about seven pages in front of you. I'm not going to go line by line and we would be here for a hot minute. Um, but I just want to say that we are respectfully submitting this proposal to you for the continuation and enhancement of Economic Development Services. Again, the E D A has been in business for over forty years and we have been the local economic development organization, otherwise known as the L E D O, that the state of Indiana has recognized since nineteen eighty six, eighty seven. Qualifications for you are on page one. We are a sister organization to the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are housed together. We share office space together, but we are two separate organizations. But because of that, we share a board and that board is comprised of the top business and education leaders in Delaware County. So they're ensuring that, um, the E D A's economic development strategies align with the priorities of stakeholders in our community. Second bullet point on page two, um, we talk about our staff that we have, um, in economic development. Both Tracy and I have been doing economic development for over twenty years. And if you want to pull, pull in the very back that little insert that I slid in there, I actually was cleaning my house this weekend and ran across, across that article that was in the newspaper like twenty years ago. For Tracy and I were going on, um, our training with Oklahoma University Economic Development Institute. We look really young there, so I just was excited to see a picture of us looking young. I thought I would share it with you as well. Uh, fiscal responsibility, we are not legally required to do so, but the Economic Development Alliance goes through an annual audit um, every year to demonstrate financial transparency and accountability to our stakeholders. To make sure that all of our funding is being used appropriately. Uh, we talk about regional statewide and national partnerships. Uh, these, we are, um, part of the East Central Indiana Development Council. That's a coalition of leaders from eight counties. We work together on regional economic development, um, opportunities, including the Ready Grant that has gone through for the last two cycles. On another note, that's probably the last round of Ready we're going to see in a little while because of, uh, financial constraints at the State House. Uh, we are part of the International Economic Development Council. They are the premier global association for economic development professionals. And we grab insight from them, I would say, on a weekly basis. We're also part of the Indiana Economic Development Association. That is the statewide network of economic development professionals. Tracy Lutton on our team is serving on the I E D A's Legislative Council right now. And we are also part of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Um, that's not part of that. We work collaboratively with them on a weekly basis. Uh, you can see leadership on boards that we have here, East Central Indiana Regional Partnership, East Central Indiana Planning District, Muncie Industrial Revolving Loan Fund. Uh, we serve on committees with the I E D A Legislative Committee, as I said, um, East Central Indiana Ready. We hold membership in all three of those, the Transit Land and Business Council, I E D A, I E D C. We have done that for the entire, um, existence, going all the way back to nineteen eighty six. And then on page three, um, that talks about the Economic Development Alliance here in Delaware County is the longest tenured economic development organization to hold the accredited economic development designation from the International Economic Development Council. We are also accredited through them, um, every five years. When they came to visit us a few years ago, they took notes. The people, the team that came here to make sure that we were doing things appropriately actually took notes and they sent that to our board and said, not only does this organization function at the highest level, we actually stole ideas to take out when we are going into other communities. Uh, we have established relationships with site location consultants. Uh, one is actually here today and would like to talk to you about this proposal when I'm finished. Um, we, um, the I E D C, I know it's a lot of acronyms. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation recognizes the E D A as the local economic development organization for Delaware County. All leads from the state come through our organization. Any lead they get, um, they filter it through our organization. The reason why they do that is because they first of all have the working relationship with us. But also they have transcripts of all of our maps and all the buildings that we have available. And they have done their due diligence. So when a site selector reaches out to a state organization, the state organization will take all of the information that that site selector is looking at. And you will get all kinds of requests. We need, you know, a hundred thousand square foot building. We need to have a rail spur beside it. We need so much water capacity. The state does their due diligence and knows what's available around the state. And then we'll pick three, four, maybe sometimes ten communities for that site selector to go to. They know us, they know our organization, they know that we're Johnny on the spot and we give them correct information each and every time. Um, scope of services for this, will be a one, one shop, one stop shop for you. Uh, clarity and efficiency, confidentiality, we sign confidentiality agreements, our entire board does. The reason for that is site selectors don't want information floating around out around the community as far as what may or may not be coming. So, you know, if Dan Taylor decided that they were going to move a manufacturing organization or, I wish they would, but they won't. Um, Dan Taylor doesn't want that out because they don't want every other community across the state reaching out at them and saying, hey, we've got a better spot for you. Uh, comprehensive assistance is on this list. Again, the no conflict of interest. Um, if you accept this proposal, we would also like to have the, um, Delaware County Redevelopment Person that you hire underneath our roof. We would like to oversee that for you because Tracy Lutton actually did that job. So whoever the Redevelopment Commission hires to run that, we would like to, um, train them for you and make sure that they are doing their due diligence. Um, in addition to that, we all work so collabor, we all should work so collaboratively together. But we would like to have them underneath the same roof. Um, page five talks about our services with business attraction and recruitment. That's again with our site selectors, um, organizing lead external trips. Um, we're working with financial legal consulting firms as well as state, local and federal agencies. Uh, we have a B R and E U organization, um, underneath our roof, which again acronym Business Retention and Expansion. We conduct regular outreach to our businesses to say, hey, what are the pains that you are feeling? Are you thinking about expanding? Let's talk about availability of grants for you. Um, and some of those grants are the manufacturing readiness grants, the next level jobs employer training grant. These are all things that are available at the state level that we're intimately familiar with, that our businesses are not, because that's not the world in which they live. Uh, we all, we also do workforce and talent development. We work with Eastern Indiana Works. And Skid Workers. Uh, page six talks about infrastructure and site planning. Uh, we do, we lead the site planning to prepare for visits, um, for investments for companies that are looking at our area. Uh, and so when we do that, we will pull together a team, we'll pull together all of the utilities. We'll pull together I V tech if we think they might be interested in, um, some training opportunities. And then we work with local government and utility providers to make sure that what those companies are seeking can be established in our community. Uh, we also engage with state and federal legislators. You've got one that's built in in the organization that's kind of helpful. Uh, community and quality of life. We also support housing, transportation and other livability initiatives. We just kind of take that on, um, we've taken that on in the last couple of years because we recognize that we can no longer just have economic development without workforce development. We can't really have workforce development if we don't have, have housing available as well. So we've taken on those initiatives to see how we can be a holistic community to attract new businesses into the area. The funding request that we are asking is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. This is not a raise over what was given, um, even twelve years ago, not accounting for any kind of inflation. I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the county gave to our organization twelve years ago, all the way up through about twenty six years ago. So we are just asking for that funding support. Um, I know that's a lot to ask, but we think that we give you, uh, a big bang for your buck. Um, we are definitely tried and true. Uh, our last great, um, attraction that came into our community was Canpat. The, the initial investment for Canpat to come into our community was five hundred million dollars. So if you take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and, and take that five million, five hundred million, we've pretty much paid for ourselves for the next, I don't even know how many years, but it will, will be well beyond my retirement. Um, and I also like to tell people that that was not just an initial investment for that building itself. But there is a company, and I tell this all the time, I don't want to say which company it was. But Canpat selected a, a local company to fulfill drains, just with the drains in Canpat. A local plumbing company, two million dollars. I mean, those investments filter down. We don't even know the full extent of it. We had a local catering company that catered for Canpat how many months? Twelve? Twelve months. We had caterer that catered for them and, and actually since they were coming from another country, learned specific dishes from their country to serve them. That was a big deal for her catering company. That, that really was transformational for her. Um, so again, we are asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And I'm happy to discuss this proposal with you, um, going forward. Uh, we have Chris Brazler here who would like to chat with you. He actually was the site selector that Canpat chose um, to determine where their site would be after a key chat. I'm happy to come back up and talk about a garage. Unless you have any specific questions for me right now.
I do. Commissioners, uh, my name is Chris Brazler. Uh, I run a site selection, um, business. Just happened to be here on another matter which is somewhat related. Um, but, uh, found out a little bit, uh, about, um, what Tracy and Elizabeth are up to. They, um, said, what do you think of where we're headed and, and what's going on? Said I can, I can speak a little bit about the experience we have had and the importance of when I'm looking at a project and I represent packaging companies, uh, data center, uh, companies, as well as some furniture, uh, manufacturer. Uh, when we looked at, uh, a potential site selection, uh, certainly the land is, is important because of the attributes that it might have. Uh, but what, uh, I think was really important in what Elizabeth just said was we see every state potential from here. In other states and here in Indiana, I have had the experience where you go to the state and the state says, why don't you look here, here and here? Because they are the most responsive teams. They will be able to give you the clearest messaging. They will be able to give you the information you need quicker, faster, better. They're going to make your job easier. And for people that are in my role, and that triples down to the. And for people that are in my role, and that triples down to the clients that I work with, again, stepping onto that property with the information that you require, there's no hidden agendas, but everyone's working on the same team is, is quite imperative. And your team is phenomenal. I've done it all over the country and I've done it for many years. This is a very, very special group that you have. I understand they're looking to bring more under that umbrella and I can tell you from other experiences in counties that are disjointed that the moment the information is not clear, and that does start all the way from, do you have enough houses? So that imperative is something that is very much in the forefront of, of site selectors right now. All the way to the infrastructure, even to the redevelopment authority because we're always looking for elements within the community that tend to win, reuse something. Because a lot of times it's a lot easier to use, reuse a building on another site than it is to specifically go out and build new, fresh greenfield site. Having that together, uniformity, clarity, transparency, um, is a winning combination. As I said, I've seen it elsewhere where it's not together. And it's like the fish that goes to the hook, smells it and says, no. So uh, just thought if I could help, that's uh one element that I see every day in, in the work that I do.
Thank you for that. We always like to get those eight points. Thank you.
So, oh, go ahead. Comprehensive proposal, appreciate that. Um, I believe in order to provide the commissioners out of the time to digest this, I believe we should take this under advisement. Uh, secondly, uh, we need to research the funding, just like for ECI, uh, or EEP um, and consider funding, whatever funding would come out of the development under the position. That's what I believe we should do. So are you, you have a motion to table?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I would, I would table this.
As long as, as possible, we can get a copy of the contract. We already saved one. Tell me agenda on the contract and then, and then whether there's gonna be one that up there. Yep.
We have a motion to table in the second. Can you call roll please?
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Yes. And if you could send an electronic version of that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Our email is down. It's been down since Friday morning. I'm twitchy. I have, I have no idea what's going on in the world. I'm twitchy. Okay. Thank you for that. So um, also here uh for economic development organization business, um, I'm coming to you today to talk about four twelve North Martin Avenue, which is a parking garage at the Village Promenade. So that's the big parking garage out on the campus. And I'm pretty sure that like the uh, Acai Gold Place is right in front of it. It's a landlocked parcel. And um, there has been a massive snafu in our world. Um, so we have on this property, um, the original form for our tax exempt status is not found anywhere. Although I know it was filed because I have the Form 136 in our world that basically asks for the, the change to the property. So this goes all the way back to twenty twelve when the county redevelopment person at the time structured this deal. That's the people we cannot find for the original tax exemption. But again, we do know that it was filed because there was a secondary form um that was filed when the actual garage was created. So the original was just for the land. And so I do have a copy of Form 136 and um the auditor's office had that as well. And that was filed by Rona Bucktree, our organization, in twenty fourteen. That basically said, the land has been changed. There is a garage on there. We're asking for a tax exemption. There was a tax exemption then for our nonprofit. Um, and I should give you a little, little bit of history as well. Um, that got rebonded with the city and MRC. And now that garage is also tied up in the bonds with the convention Sanus Garage. So this is, this, this eventually, again, because of snafu and I, and this snafu was in our office, we do know that. So uh, the assessor's office sent um an email out to an employee in our office in twenty twenty-two, early twenty-two. I arrived April first in twenty twenty-two. And, and the employee never responded to it. She's no longer with us. We, we know this. That email requested that a new Form 136 be filed by, I don't even remember what the date was, in April, or in, in twenty twenty-two. It was not filed. So at that point in time, this got placed back, the, the taxation status changed. And we were, we were, we were beginning to get taxes sent to us. This is very unbelievable. It has been so gracious in trying to help us because this has just been a real mess. The bottom line is, we've gone through the process. I've been working with the auditor's office, oh my gosh, since June of twenty twenty-three. We have reached out to the state. The state has said, of course, this property cannot go to the tax sale. This is a municipality owned organization or, or, you know, facility. It's a landlocked. It is tax exempt. The state auditor's office has indicated that since we missed the process to go in and say, this was an error on our part, all we needed to do was come and humbly beg for forgiveness from the commissioners for this to be removed and this taxation status to be renewed. Now, we have also then filed the one twenty form, which is the original form, on all of, all of the properties that we hold um on behalf of the city, county, any property that we are holding. We have filed that form. That was filed um at the end of the year for all of our properties. I will also say that there is um, there's a gray area in state code and um you could read it that the, that you have to fill out these forms every two years. And others read it that you do not have to. There is a bill moving through the legislature right now to correct this. So we will never have to deal with this again. We will just simply have to show our nonprofit tax status on, on any property that might slip through the cracks. But today I'm here to humbly ask that the commissioners forgive this tax that is owed because we were a tax exempt organization when it was purchased. We were a tax exempt um organization when the building was built. And we have remained a tax exempt organization ever since. So I'm here to ask for forgiveness of both of the taxes.
Thank you. Clarifying question. Um, so you did not pay any property taxes on four twelve North Martin, which is the village parking garage from twenty fourteen until twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay. And then all of a sudden, property taxes were assessed?
Correct.
To the nonprofit.
Correct. And then it was placed on the um tax sale. And then the mayor went in and I don't know, I think he paid a hundred dollars to just make sure it was removed from the tax sale. And so that exempted us. At least there was a, there was a good faith effort to show we weren't trying to remedy the problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to, and try to remedy this. However, I think um, the assessor and John are both working on this. At some point, I think I want to discuss with them some of their issues before we actually make. I think, uh, you know what the, I'm, I'm.
I believe they have until July first to make their final payment for their rest of the tax. I've not been made aware of any of the follow-up that she just talked about. I'm the one that worked on it. So I, I have no new information that he mentioned that there is a decision from the state that this property qualifies as being tax exempt. I've been provided no documentation as to that. But you haven't been able to talk to the state down there to see who's sitting on it or? There's no one at the state sitting on anything. This is at a local level. I thought you said, he, he said that.
Well, I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure this gets clarified before we make that decision is my point. I'm, again, I'm willing to, to forgive them a debt, but I need to perfect work and I want to make sure the assessor or legal counsel is okay with it. So do you know where it stands with the assessor again?
Where it stands is we're waiting on payment. I've not been, nobody has contacted me since that hundred dollar payment was made. So as it stands right now, that hundred dollar payment was just to remove it from the tax bill. There was no other way to remove it unless there was an agreement in place with the county to do so, to make the payment. So as of right now, they have until July first to pay their tax payment.
So the agreement with the county was done by the treasurer, Brad Holt, and the mayor, who represents the Muncie Redevelopment Commission. A hundred dollars to give them to remove the tax.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
I think that, that's basically where it stands. Right? So I mean, high level, we have a property that didn't have any property taxes for, for, for ten years.
And then the statute changed.
Statute did change.
Requiring filing, so the assessor's office contacted them and said, which they did not have to, said you have not filed your paperwork. No one responded. Then there is an appeal deadline. They did not file an appeal. That's fatal. So it would be interesting to note that we at the time held twenty-three properties and only a handful were removed from the nonprofit status. We don't understand that. But regardless, this one was certainly an error.
Definitely some inconsistencies all around. So the amount we're talking about, I believe, is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents minus a hundred dollars.
Correct.
I don't, I don't disagree. I want to hear the, the legal counsel, but you know, to me, I'm incensed and I understand the legality of it. Why I don't understand the legality of it, so I want to get up to speed is, properties didn't have property taxes assessed to them. Boltfold, let's make it up. There's twenty. How many, how many properties did that bolt estimate? Twenty?
Uh, forty, yes.
Forty. And three or four of them got all of a sudden taken off the rolls.
Correct.
And now we have a large tax bill. So I want to make sure you're legal and everything, you know. That's why I would enter a motion.
I have a second motion and I, and I want to be prepared. Okay, so Sherry made the motion, table this. Uh, Christian Brand second, roll call please. Mr. Brand?
Yes.
McRegan?
Yeah.
McHenry?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next we have the uh, twenty twenty-five aerial imagery funding.
Good morning. Kyle Johnson, Chief Information Officer, Office of Information to IIS Services. So I am here asking for four thousand dollars to help uh cover some of the costs of our twenty twenty-five aerial photo project. Uh, every two years, uh, we try to get new aerial imagery. We've been doing that over the last dozen or so years. Um, the company that does that for us is Eagleview. Uh, this flight is the third in a series of three on the current contract. This is a concurrent contract. Um, the full cost of the flight is ninety-three thousand dollars and change. Um, we primarily fund this through our GIS fund, which is a non-inverting fund that is shared with my office and the plant commission. Um, because it's a GIS data set and used for transportation, it's eligible for eighty percent reimbursement. We run that through their office, get eighty percent of that total purchase price back. So and to keep it sustainable, every two years, what we do is go and ask a variety of agencies um to help fund that, the small amounts from every agency, about a dozen um to help cover that twenty percent cost to keep that amount in our GIS fund so it's sustainable every few years. Um, we go to assessor, the auditor, plant commission put money in, county engineer, uh, Muncie sanitary district, county downtown, uh, city of Muncie, and then we also reach out to economic development partners to help as well. Uh, about a dozen agencies that we ask, a small, a small amount to help cover that. This is, like you said, we've been doing this for like some time. Uh, the first digital aerial photos were captured in nineteen ninety-nine. So yeah, we've been doing it for a while. A two-year cycle seems to work well for our community in terms of the growth. Um, you'd be surprised how much has changed since twenty twenty-three, there's a lot of development. The aerial photo is the base of our GIS. We use that to update all the other data.
So you're asking for four thousand dollars. Do you know which area we put this fund in the past?
Uh, we have contractual. Yeah. We have contractual money. We have that plan there.
I do.
I mean, I'm certainly can find one that has been funded there.
So there's nothing in the IT, um, maybe project three?
It is, that's, I'm, that's for sure. I must know. Well, for this year, I think, kind of, we have a hundred thousand, but you know, it's only six months to go until we get the new ones and you wait until it.
You're asking for four thousand?
That's right. He said we split it.
And I'd make a motion to a primary, but we need to find the money in our added plans, four thousand dollars. It's important.
Yeah.
I heard uh an ask of the county council uh last week too, so it sounds like everybody else has signed on.
I'd like you to approve this agreement. A second, roll call please. Mr. Regan?
Yeah.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
McHenry?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Next we have the AT&amp;T contract with Mr. Fluke.
Morning, Commissioners. Good morning. From the IT department. Uh, what you have in front of you today is the renewal of an AT&amp;T's contract for the uh, push ethernet between the eleven sites that the county has uh that we provide internet service to and uh where they also have all the data transported, transported back from the uh IT center here. Uh, that contract was originally put in in January of twenty twenty. Um, and with that, they've um told me and I've given you a listing of all the sites, but uh they say the increase, there's, there's no increase on this particular agreement from the original. Um, the contract now is five thousand, forty, fifty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents a month, which is sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents a year. And this service and this service provides all the connectivity to all the eleven locations that we have, uh, county facilities at. This has to be signed by July seventeenth of this year?
Yes.
Where, where did we take the money from before? Commissioners, have we been, or, or the budget?
You know, you, uh.
I would think our economy, three, five, lies and.
Sure.
Love, love. And when we make our new, the added plan, I wish we would give out these more than we.
But I think some of these may be included in the budget too, the budget process as well. But sir, sir, I'll go back to the last discussion. I just want to take this in, in, under advisement. I, I would, I would, I would.
Yeah, the same guy.
Yeah, and it is insane. Been paying for it. This is a sixty-month agreement too, uh, just like the original. So Sarah, we do have a light item in the budget for this.
And it, it, that's probably what I can, can do. Be amicable if you want to do more research.
Did you make a motion?
No. I will. I'm not going to say, um, I'm ready for certain.
All right. So we have a motion to approve, uh, a second?
Yeah.
I have a second. Roll call please. Mr. Brand?
Yeah.
Mr. Regan?
Yeah.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
I'm ready.
Um, next we have a contract with IPW. Indiana Pump Works. Mr. Brand?
Yep. So Indiana Pump Works has been working on the wet well out of Justice Center. And um had some issues out there. I think the uh, when the new jail was built, the wet well that was there for the original Wilson Building was expanded. And there was a, a process put in between the jail and the, or wet well that's a, people call it a grinder, but I don't believe that it actually is. Uh, it's nicknamed the muffin monster. That's what takes care of a, a whole bunch of things out there. Uh, I've spent quite a bit of time out there uh over the last uh few weeks with uh Zach Strauss, who's here from Indiana Pump Works. Um, the pumps in the wet well are also not grinder pumps. People call them grinder pumps and they're not. They're solid pumps with a gutter bar that's, could be designed better. And um, you know, we have a lot of problems right now. I think the muffin monster failed, which caused contributed to the two pumps in the wet well failing. In addition to the control panel out there has an air compressor. And the air compressor is used to aerate the wet well, which you need. But that air compressor inside that control cabinet created condensation. And in this cold weather, it all froze in there. There are icicles hanging from inside that control panel. And it has, I believe that's what picked up that control room. I believe that. When you look at the connections in that control panel, all the copper connections are black, which indicates attraction and moisture. All that stuff's gonna have to be redone. So I asked Zach Strauss from Indiana Pump Works to put together a uh, a monthly a service agreement here. And all service agreements would be to come in from the commissioners. And Zach is here to uh present or answer any questions as we have them, but our proposal would be that we adopt this and have them done the next three months in a row and service. That also provide us with an update and then maybe once we get the connections fixed, the control board is actually in Florida being fixed right now to get reinstalled in the control panel, relocate the compressor to a poly box that's adjacent to or attached to the outside of the control panel. And then we have two new pumps on order too. They're improved, but they're still not grinder pumps. So this, you know, we've spent probably sixty-eight, seventy thousand dollars on this thing in the last couple of months. And this is still not the right solution.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just so disappointed that, um, because I never heard about this, um, um, solution.
That deregger that you have in front of you right there, that is technology to reverse the pumps. What happens is things get flushed down the toilet.
Yeah.
And the pumps stall and then they kick out, kick on, kick out, kick on, but they don't have a company thing. And that technology is to reverse the pumps and then try to get them.
Yeah, I mean, that'll help.
That's an additional big time thing. So Zach, anything you want to add from what I introduced?
So, uh, first of all, good morning. Um, kind of what you and I discussed at the courthouse, this is kind of a solution for the symptom, not a long-term solution for the root cause. However, I, I think this is a good starting place to see how the station will act once we implement everything that's, that's in front of you now.
Yep. And we have to fix those copper connections, get that moisture out of the control panel immediately, or the control panel is going to fail again, which can cause the pumps to fail again, which we just spent thirty-five thousand dollars getting two new pumps, which will be in by when, the two new pumps?
On March eleventh and the eighteenth.
Yeah, and, uh, okay, what's your, I'd make a motion to, uh, adopt or award this, uh, service contract estimated labor is eleven hundred a month. That's estimated, so it won't exceed that, right?
Right.
And, uh, get, get them to come the next three months and give us a report and then we can probably stretch that out maybe once a quarter.
And maybe by then we'll have our edit.
It's very possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's there. Right. I agree, he's fine.
Do you have a motion to approve the contract? I would have a second, sec- a motion to approve the contract and a second rule call please. Professor Gregan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, so Corson Contract? Yeah, Corson, uh, is, uh, one of our providers for fire and security and they have an auto renewal contract, which I'm a big fan of auto renewal contracts. So I asked for all the twenty-twenty-four service reports which were sent to us and I review them in detail. And I also asked them to provide a twenty-twenty-five service agreement, which they haven't done yet. Uh, we do have a meeting coming up. I called them in to review. So that's the update as I have it right now. I would make a motion, uh, that we tabled the Corson Service Agreement until such time that I can have a meeting with them and then they can provide us with a updated twenty-twenty-five service agreement that will then come before all three commissioners.
Okay, okay. Hey, we have a motion to table the Corson Contract and a second rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Gregan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next we have the IU Health Master Agreement.
This is just our IU Health Master Agreement that we get every year on the cost of what we're spending and just ask that you sign that. Do you have any questions?
Is this for the clinic?
Yes, for the clinic.
So.
And the price about the same. It went up four percent.
This is an, so Pam and I met with the clinic, at the clinic on January seventeen and we introduced to them all the complaints that were coming from the employees and, and the dependents that are using clinic. And during that meeting, I asked for a number of deliverables, um, metrics that they said that they have, but we still haven't received.
Oh, okay.
Right?
No, I haven't received them.
Uh, I haven't received them either. And then I've had more complaints since then. When does this have to be approved?
It's, uh, December first twenty-four. Let me see. I don't know that she took. I just said December. Well, I would say, this is the quarterly report, so I would say just as soon as possible. There's not a date on here.
Yeah, and this has, I'll be honest with you. I'm sick of that, right? Um, I don't want, I would like, I can do it if nobody else wants to do it. I would like to look at Pam and try to get a price from all the other, I mean, there's more than one clinic down town. I'd like to get a price from, uh, who, what the other companies? Uh, I'm not against that. I, I've, I've never used the clinic, so I don't know if I'm sick of it or not.
But I, I guess I'm tired of the complaints. I'm tired of it. I, I don't use it either, but I'm, I'm sick of the complaints.
And we should say, have they modified recently and there are new staff maybe ever? They have hired another doctor since we've been there. Even, and, uh, another nurse practitioner is coming in. Their problem is out there, the wait time. I mean, it's just awful, the wait time.
So is there, is there like a doctor and a nurse practitioner working now?
There's two doctors and a nurse practitioner on the one side, on the urgent side, there's two, one and a half doctors, same way.
Was just like one doctor?
Yeah. No, not for the whole clinic. The, the urgent side has one doctor and one nurse practitioner. And then the workplace health partners is as we know it.
Yeah.
Have, um, two doctors. Now they just hired another one.
Okay, because there was just one.
Yeah, Doctor Howard was doing it all. I know it's impossible for him to do that. So he, they have, they cannot get people hired. They cannot get people hired. That seems to be the consensus of everyone out there.
I do believe it's gotten worse. Your point, I think when this was located, uh, on Tillotson.
Oh.
And if you use the clinic is better now that it's been consolidated with the urgent care. I think that Delaware County, whoever, who the city uses to?
The city and the school.
I, I believe we're funding their urgent care efforts and it's hurting the, uh, clinic here.
We were all very spoiled with the other clinic.
Well, it's the same, it's the same deal, right? Still IU Health.
It is, but we didn't have the urgent care.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I think when they added the urgent care, I believe we're funding their urgent care effort, right? And I, I, I agree a hundred percent. I guess, I, I mean, there's, we have two more in town. Let's, let's talk, let's, let's talk to them. So questions that you need to take that. I want those deliverables that I asked for on January seventeenth. She took copious notes and so did I. I'd be glad to give you a copy of my notes. When does this have to be signed? When does this, when does a decision have to be made? And then I'll add one more comment. This is, this is a way out there discussion, but I have, I've had one initial discussion with Jamie Bane on our health department and we're thinking around the idea of possibly using the health department as our employee clinic. I don't know what kind of services we can provide there, but what I need are those deliverables from IU to know how many people use it, what they use it for, a lot of the prescriptions, a lot of, you know, a lot of the diagnoses. I don't want to see names, but I need to give that information to our health department so we can look and see what would it take to put a service in place. I'm not, I'm not replacing urgent care, but we already have a health department that's great inside with the, with the space and technology. Like then we use our own health department as a clinic to get away from the stuff we're sitting.
What are the hours out there now? At, they open at eight and close at six. I'm just, I'm, yes, I'm, the urgent care is open on Saturday.
I have one more thing. I was, it's been about a week and a half ago. I, I got a text from an employee said that, uh, their son had a hundred and four-degree fever. Young, young kid, so, um, said they'd been waiting a couple of, two and a half hours. I was only a few, I, I was only a few miles away and I went. I went to the clinic and there were more people working the front desk than there were working in the back.
Okay.
And I went, yep, told them who I was, told them I wanted to look and I can't believe they let me in. But they did. And there were more people working the front desk than there were working in the back. And that, that employee's wife and son have been sitting there two and a half hours.
It's, it's awful and I, I feel for them. It's awful. It's awful when we get cold every day.
I make a motion to table it. A motion to table this agreement, a second rule call please. Professor Gregan?
Yes.
Professor Brand?
Absolutely.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, the, the cell tower agreement, who want to discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, this would be a good time.
Questions about that?
John's got shit. I, I brought it with me. Um, so last month we did, uh, an agreement with Crown Castle and John watched the meeting and came back with some comments, uh, specifically about the length of the term, asking about whether we approve thirty years or twenty years and asking commissioners if we would agree uh, to continue to negotiate for twenty years. And, um, I believe that we need to make a motion to clarify and have a clean record that we're specifically approving AT&T as the subtenant on the cell tower at the highway department. Um, and, um, we would need a second for that.
And this for clarity, I think the technical name of the lease is C C A T T L L C.
Can you say that again?
C C A T T L L C.
That's who we're adding to the cell tower?
Yeah, that's what's on this Crown Castle lease, um, for the subtenant that they sent us. So I want to just make sure that's in the address.
So my motion is to approve AT&T, uh, subtenant on the cell tower at the highway department doing business as C C A T T L L C. And we give permission for John to continue to negotiate towards a twenty-year contract rather than a thirty.
I got that.
Do you get that motion?
And? Yes, we have a second rule call please. Professor Gregan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, early ordinance for first reading, ordinance for second reading. Um, we have a resolution for approval, resolution amended resolution of Delaware County more commissioners, establish some policies and procedures protect the forum, also the effective administration of public meetings. So I don't know who's prepared to talk about this. I'm glad to jump in if no one else wants to talk about it. This, do you have anything?
It's a few. This is the, the forum for the public meetings. It addresses your public hearings in your public meetings. Um, it's.
So there was a new statute, um, passed recently by the state. And this brings us up, up to date there. I do have a couple of, uh, just discussion points, uh, under section D, one D, um, it says currently members of the public may speak during a public meeting as required by the statutes. Maybe that language as required by the statutes might be better as allowed by state statute and we specifically point out that state statute, since this is why we're updating it, correct? And then in C, um, the commissioners, at their sole discretion, may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting to discuss. And I think we should drop the words to discuss and just leave it free. The commissioners, at their sole discretion, may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting. Very much time individuals may given an opportunity to address the question. And then significant change here from the practice that the commissioners have had in the past in section I. Um, it says, uh, each speaker may only speak once and will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak unless a short period of time is set forth by the commissioners at the start of the public comment period. Here's the change. Time may not be reserved or yielded to other speakers. And once an individual has finished speaking, that individual's remaining time, if any, is waived. That's a change from that practice. I, um.
Yeah, I have a question then, that we should, I mean, I, I'm okay with them yielding to them now.
Okay. Clarify that?
I think that one out. I, not part of it.
Don't take it for out.
Just that part of it for the yielding?
Yeah.
But Melissa's, time may not be just for yielding.
What do you want to move, turn it on?
No, um, you want it to be that time may be.
No, we don't, we don't want time in that. We don't want to be able to do that. Leave it in.
Oh, does that?
Let's leave it in, yes, right. And then under section R, it states the Delaware County Sheriff shall be empowered to remove an attendee and or speaker from the meeting if the speaker and or attendee refuses to leave when directed by the president for the Board of Commissioners. So I reached out to the sheriff and asked him if he would, you know, his response. And, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, on his response, um, basically said, um, I'm a place here. The sheriff's actually be willing to enforce this as long as a person is clear and obvious public nuisance or, or has committed a crime. Um, so, you know, we don't want, we don't need any over, overzealous board members trying to silence somebody. It needs to be obvious and this gives them three warnings.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That, I, I think it needs to, uh, it doesn't say that anywhere.
Actually, I think.
O has the.
O has the number of warnings, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, I get. Yeah, the president of the Board of Commissioners may issue up the three warnings to the attendee. And it says may issue.
Yeah, you could go, I'm giving, you could go DEFCON three, right?
Uh, I'm giving, okay.
Do you want to table this until I get the correction?
I.
You can have heard it.
I think I would, I would like to make a motion to approve the language in B, C, and leave I. Okay. I have a motion to approve the resolution pending the changes. A second?
Second.
A motion of second rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Gregan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
All right, uh, next we have, um, Department Heads elected officials.
Good morning, commissioners. Sherry from the Delaware County Highway Department. I talked with Commissioner Brian this morning. We do have an open position that it's going to be opening up at the highway. It is a payroll clerk. Um, he wanted me to bring that to your extension and ask for your blessing to rehire.
I'm going to, you have got a position here, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Good morning, Commissioner. Andrew Ramirez, Judge of Delaware City Department, due since, uh, first of the year. Commissioner Brand invited me this morning to kind of outline, same person to the commissioners as well, so agenda on public, uh, changes uh, that have been implemented recently with regard to our juvenile justice system here in Delaware County and regard to the, uh, detention center with which you're all involved. Um, Delaware County, uh, withdrew from the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, uh, program, uh, state, state-run program. Uh, withdrew on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and that was to more effectively and efficiently, uh, focus our time, energy, efforts on localized partnerships, establishing and maintaining those, uh, as well as local opportunities and local initiatives. Uh, Delaware County have been participating in the JDI state program since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, this decision was not one just of myself, rather the, uh, Juvenile Probation Department, Juvenile Board and myself, a, a consideration and discussion, uh, came to this, uh, decision. Additionally, there have been some immediate changes with regard to the, um, Delaware County Detention Center, uh, with regards to, uh, juvenile detention. Uh, effective immediately, there have been, uh, three offenses, uh, which have been designated for automatic immediate detention at criminal address, uh, that being dangerous possession of a firearm, uh, resisting law enforcement in a vehicle, as well as, uh, certain battery offenses, felony-level battery offenses, including resulting in moderate bodily injury, uh, injury to a pregnant woman, uh, battery with a deadly weapon and battery on a public safety official. Uh, a decision was made with regards to the safety not only of the juveniles, law enforcement and the community, uh, in general. Lastly, in that being said, we are, uh, figuring out a time, uh, that would look best for everyone, our community stakeholders, um, the court, probation, prosecutor, public defender, uh, commissioners, community stakeholders to come together and redesign the detention screening pool that we are utilizing with regards to what juveniles get contained at the detention center. And so we look forward to working with you all, uh, our community stakeholders and the public in general with regards to, uh, improving and making our juvenile justice system here in Delaware County possible to meet. Thank you.
Great idea, Judge. Thank you for your, uh, your update. You have a mission. Any other Department Heads elected officials? You guys received your February Ways and Measures Report?
Yeah.
Okay, next we'll go to claims. We have the payment of claims of one million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. I'll second it. I just want to make a couple of comments. In the last meeting, I didn't approve the claims due to lack of, um, descriptions and they improved over the last two weeks, which I appreciate, but there's still quite a few descriptions missing. Um, in our claims. Um, in our claims, as you're gonna see today, there's an names keeper's tax of about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, there were credit cards, claims of seventeen thousand dollars, dirts with no descriptions. Um, the wet well is in there, Sherry, that you asked about the thirty five thousand, that's the muffin monster that I talked about a minute ago. And then for the surveyor's office, we have, there's eighteen thousand dollars of the drainage in here. And then there's a wheel tax uh of a hundred and twenty three thousand.
I wonder if that was the new, um, but usually we don't pay in those things.
And so, this is the muffin monster that is installed, so you have that, you have the jail, and the muffin monster, and the wet. Muffin monster in the middle failed, that that got replaced, uh, maybe a month and a half or two months.
And and um, I don't understand, appreciate it. Um, on the electric bills, which I do watch quite often, on the second line under description, I would like the location there. And I know that utilities all come to you. You don't receive them from the department anymore like we used to do. I don't know, I thought we were, I thought we were trying to.
Some of those shows.
Yes, okay. But I really would like locations, but I do like them there. I just thought that on the description. We can put a bad report, written down by location. Yeah, I make that report, I guess.
Get a lot of transfers um uh help. Into uh. Little bit. Is uh. Is it just a, I don't know. Uh, without, I don't know. I can't. Yeah. I have to back down now, I have to back down. But if you don't mind, you don't mind finding out, let us, obviously, I've never seen it. I've never seen that. And so I appreciate the increased number of descriptions that are in there, it helps me understand, it's helping the public understand, and I think it's also driving a lot of discussion. I've had department heads come and ask questions about the things after they've seen the descriptions, so I think this is a helping, a helping. A more accurate, I think, yep. So I, I said, so we have a motion and a second, play the claim, pay the claims, rule call please. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
No.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
That payment of our claims of uh thirty five thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty one cent. And then, and second, and that is for the muffin monster, that is the, this system between the jail and the wet. Do we have a motion to pay the claims for that, a second, rule call please? Professor Brand?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next we have payment of payroll for two twenty six and twenty five, one million fifty four thousand three hundred ninety dollars and forty one cent. And then, and I'll second it, and I would like to remind uh everybody that, you know, this is super important, we pay people correctly and on time, that's one thing we shouldn't mess up. And I understand that this payroll is air free. If that's not true, I would like for somebody to let me know, but thank you. Let's keep up the good work. Hey, so we have a motion to pay the payroll in a second, rule call please. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next we have uh public comments. We have Linda Hanson. Danielle, can you just be quiet, please?
Good morning commissioners, I'm Linda Hanson, fourteen hundred West North Street. Um, I'm speaking for League of Women Voters. And I want to thank uh Commissioner Brand for bringing us up to date on where the ordinance is for solar. Um, but I have a question and uh I want to confirm that it is still on target for a third uh meeting, a special meeting with the. My uh medical planning person.
Yeah, I believe our deadline is the seventeenth of March, and in my communication with John about recently, I believe we're still on target for that as of today.
Okay, so it will, it will be released to the public ten days before that meeting, so we haven't yet, anyway. Okay, um, and my other question, my other question is, who, who was working on the ordinance? You mentioned you and um, oops, and.
And now it's starting to involve the planning person.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a nod, how do you guys fill up that timeline? I don't, I don't, it's getting kind of tight. So, I I wanna be clear, we wanna try to make the timeline, we suggested last month, but that may not, that may not happen, it may get pushed back another month. So, I just want, I'll be clear. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that did, it'll get pushed back, I just want to be clear, that's why I say we're on target as of today. Alright, next we have uh Cheryl Dawson.
Good morning, everyone, um, my name is Cheryl Dawson, I'm at zero twenty eight and Wheeling Avenue. And on one hand, I'm apologizing for being here again, talking about solar. Um, I know we're all kind of tired of that, but um, but also thank you for the possibility even coming here and speaking in person. Um, I just have a question and a comment. Um, my question is, Mr. Brand, Commissioner Brand, you'd mentioned you had seen a map recently, or you saw a map recently of. The solar project along twenty eight is where the setbacks applied. And since I'm adjacent to that, would it be possible for me to see that somehow?
I believe so, it was actually on display at Cornersville Center for the Arts, it was a public meeting, they had probably a two by three poster board with that map. So it had a yellow outline of all the properties that are signed up in the solar, in Horton, there are nine property owners signed up. The largest one is a company that isn't even based here in Indiana, so, you know, if they receive income tax, it won't even come here, right? There won't be any lit associated with it. But inside that, they had these purple uh shapes that were the proposed layout of the solar panels, uh considering the five hundred foot setbacks. So, short answer is yes, I don't have a copy of that map that I can try to get on.
Oh, that I would appreciate it, since I'm right next to it. And my other comment has to do with eminent domain, the gentleman here two weeks ago had the photo showing that a project in Illinois had spread considerably. And he commented it was due to eminent domain. And I have been worried about this since I'm adjacent to it, and I actually inquired with my attorney about the possibility of that happening. And he said that if the project ownership would end up in the hands of a public, a designated public utility, then absolutely it would be a possibility that they proclaim eminent domain. Uh, for the people who have signed leases as well as for adjacent landowners, so this was my concern. And I sent an article to Commissioner Brand uh week before last about an article in Kansas. Where they currently have a bill in the state house uh for this very reason, to prohibit eminent domain. Uh, to build or expand projects uh that are solar, and they are, my understanding is they already passed a law pertaining to the wind projects in the state of Kansas. And currently they're discussing in their state house a bill to prohibit the use of eminent domain. To expand these solar projects. And something like that, I know this is the county uh venue here, not a state, it's probably something that would definitely be at the state level. Um, and the verbiage I also sent to Commissioner Brand.
That's all the time you have, thank you. Uh, Tim Nickel? Thank you, I'm still here, just, you did leave. Alright, um, that's all of the um public comments we had signed up for. Um, Ms. Reagan, you have a final comment?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the idea conference um been going on for a few years and it's gonna be held out of state on March the eighth. And it's. Um. The sign up, they'd like you to sign up, but they are gonna feed you, but it's just a way for people can go and. And learn about how to make your neighborhood a little bit stronger, um, with things going on in neighborhoods nowadays, so you can be aware. And then also, I gave you a bill, um, Delaware County will be having their two, two hundred years old bicentennial in twenty twenty seven. And Tuesday, March eighteenth, at six thirty at Men and Presta. They are having together that anyone who would like to come and learn how they can participate or what's gonna be happening. But it's just an open meeting where we will be hearing from another county how they're celebrating their, so they'll be here before you know it. But that's March eighteenth, six thirty, Tuesday night, Men and Presta. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ren? I have a little bit more than that. Um, take home vehicle policy eligibility, I gave uh the commissioners a copy and I'll read it here. I'd like to see uh some language that uh clearly defines eligibility for a take home vehicle, so. Um, it's already in our uh handbook about must live in Delaware County, and there are a few current exceptions which I don't agree with, but they're there. Um, so must live in Delaware County, uh regular travel after normal work scheduled hours. And to be, to define regular at least twice a week. Uh, where you would have regular travel after normal work, uh scheduled hours for Delaware County business. And if you're called out to perform job duties on behalf of the county at least eight times a month, which is twice a week in general, I know there are thirteen weeks and a quarter, but. Uh, on average, there are four weeks in a, in a month. And this would be documented, which is also required in our current, in our current handbook, so I would like to see that language added to our handbook policy. I personally, and I, I emailed you this, I personally uh am okay with this, with the exception of I want to exclude emergency vehicles. Um, I, I just don't wanna get into the whole emergency vehicle. Um, uh, emergency vehicle. Like I, like it muddies the water with the sheriff's department, the sheriff, and the emergency service people have to have their vehicles. And, um, you know, when we call. I disagree, so to be clear on emergency, you're talking sheriff nine one one EMS and EMA. Yeah, anything with a facing forward red light. Okay. Okay. So I'm. Like, I don't know, Danielle, should I make a motion to adopt this into our handbook and then we'll review it in the handbook meeting this week?
Yeah, that'd be fine, and I, I.
Okay, thank you, I'll make a motion, we'll adopt this language for eligibility. A motion, and a second, rule call please? Yeah, copy that, good one. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Uh, some additional updates, um, uh State of the City address is this Thursday, uh seven AM to nine AM at the Rising Convention Center. Good way to go and see what's going on in our city. Uh, making good progress with the artificial intelligence, uh, Carter Carroll, and myself, and I can't, I've had a couple of meetings with the Google folks, so that's ongoing. Uh, we have a new employee starting as a building superintendent, his name is Don Chambers. Uh, he comes to us from a good diverse background of good hands on work, and this is not a guy that's gonna check in his cool belt, he's gonna head out along the folks. I believe his start date is no later than March thirteenth. Uh, for some reason, if his current employer says you can go sooner, we would take him sooner. Um, Commissioner Reagan mentioned AEP and the, and the electric bills. I have uh asked Sarah, and she has now gathered all of our meter numbers, all the electric bills that we pay in the county. And I'll be reviewing, uh, sit down to review with AEP uh. Sure soon, the tariff rates on every one of our meters. And I pretty much guarantee we're gonna find opportunities in the amount of usage that we're doing, and the amount of power factor protection that we're not doing. And that we're not on the right tariff rates in some cases, I do believe that this will result in saving us some money. Um, paving at the Justice Center, that we, the commissioners approved last year, paved the front lot. Uh, that will be done near the end of April, once the asphalt plants open up. Uh, the highway department did go out, and so I thank Tommy and Troy and the team for going out uh late last week and filling in some of those huge holes that are out there. And we may go out and do some grooming and try to clean that up a little bit. Uh, but I have asked for a meeting with uh Mr. Mike Shelley from E and D Paving. Uh, I meet with him in the next couple of weeks, he invited us to be in that meeting, so we'll be there, I am gonna have Tommy Hunter in that meeting to review the scope of work. Because there is, uh, there are some areas where there's ponding of the water, specifically right next to the sidewalk, right? And that freezes in the wintertime and creates a hazard which we must continuously solve, and it's hard to keep up with the weather that we had here recently. So I'd like to see that sloped away and then review the striping plan. We may make that front parking lot uh one way and put the parking towards the outside, so the parking would be up next to the uh concrete, like to the sidewalk. But we would leave a big gap in the middle for a, an unloading area, so what happens out there today is UPS or Mitsubishi Bus and things, they come and stop, and it impedes traffic. So we'll create a little hole off there in that parking that's adjacent to the, to the sidewalk, so that meeting will be happening here in a couple of weeks. Um, the independent, um, independent benefits audit that's going on, I believe there have been some questions from people, good questions, I appreciate hearing the concerns. I saw HR send out some clarifications to those questions this morning, we royals sent those out. Uh, this is something that, um, like I said in the last meeting, we put in place with Apex Benefits. I do expect we'll find folks on our benefits that aren't eligible beyond the benefits, and we'll address those on a case by case basis. Um, there was an amended budget sent to the county uh from the DLGF um late last week. So I don't know if we'll be seeing updated budget books or what, I haven't read it in detail yet to know where the funding changed, I don't know if it increased or decreased, I'm just telling everybody. There was an amended budget change from the DLGF. Um, we're gonna start a continuous improvement initiative, so I think the employee of the month is off the ground good. I'd like to start a continuous improvement initiative, I'll call it CI squared. And anybody that wants to participate, the purpose of this committee would be to add value and reduce costs to a better, better service at a better price. And I'll be sharing some details of that coming up soon. Audio update, the speakers for the room here, I believe those are gonna be, the, the card will be delivered later this week. And then we'll get a plan in place to get those uh, get those implemented. And we started a strategic finance committee with the auditor, the treasurer, and commissioners to put a strategic financing plan in place. The last strategic plan the county had expired, I believe, in twenty twenty. So we haven't really had a, a plan in place since then. Uh, we really need to possibly secure financing in the future bonds, and this would help us establish a bond rating, so I'm excited about that. We've also started a strategic IT committee with uh Jim Hoon and Matt Chance, David By on Jim Hoon's team and uh myself. So we've got some good things going there, trying to modernize some of our IT infrastructure. Uh, performance evaluations, we rolled that out through first of the year with the staff meetings that, that are being held in January and February. Our next staff meeting is next Monday, so it's always the second Monday of the month. Um, those evaluations were due today. So the, the goal there was to have people self evaluate, get those turned in to their department head or their supervisor. Um, I did grant a, an extension to the highway department due to all the weather and things that they had people out on the roads and going around, but those are due in two weeks. So hopefully the performance evaluations, at least the self performance, the self evaluations are done. Um, also due today was the signage on county, county owned vehicles and the GPS. For those, I don't know if that's complete yet or not, but I'll be doing a review uh of that. Um, I think that is it. Very good, thank you, um, the last thing on the agenda is, um. Unfortunately, Angie Moyer has decided to uh take. New direction in life, so she's not gonna be with us any longer after twenty nine years of service. And Angie's done a tremendous job for this county, and quite honestly, has brought millions of dollars for this county in grant money. And, um. You know, the old saying is anyone can be replaced, well, we're, we're not gonna be able to replace that, I'm sorry. Um, there, there's, she's got a lot of knowledge. Um, she always has, uh, I've been here ten years, gone eleven, she's always steered us in the right direction. And, um, I just, on behalf of the county and, and all the residents in the county. Uh, we appreciate all your hard work uh throughout the years. And, um. Uh, it's, it's hard to lose you, so I just, I just wanna say thank you. Give her a hand. I do have a, I do have a certificate here, um. I always said you work twenty nine years somewhere and you get a certificate. Yeah, so I, 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 you know. Yeah, so, uh, 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 we, we appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Y'all are having a party for her, I think, on Monday, one to three, highway.
Yes, so, so the little shit they get the highway, carry it to Tommy, you want?
Yes, it will be Monday, um, from one to three out at the highway.
Okay.
I believe HR sent out a letter notifying all the employees, but anybody in the county is welcome to come.
You, you have, you have touched a lot of lives, you have a lot to be proud of, and, and we're proud of you, and, and, um, I would, I would give you a recommendation to anyone. Thank you very much. All right, that being said, I entertain a motion for recess. Second. Motion for recess in a second. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Regan.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry. Yes. For recess.